All right, so first thing that happens to call the orders of special meetings of the Lathridge Village City Council. On order, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna get. Okay, roll call please, thank you.
Roll call Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor, Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canaz.
Here.
Councilmember Miller. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, and I invite everyone that's in the audience in here to say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As before we approve the agenda, I would take a motion to excuse both Mayor Pro Tim Cantor and Councilwoman Miller.
I thought I heard you say.
Actually, I take a motion.
All right, move to excuse the absence of Mayor Pro Tim Cantor and Councilmember Miller.
Second. It's been moved in second and.
I'm trying to keep up.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, now I would take a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion around it? There are none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And I invite the public to speak on any items that's on the agenda for this evening, and speakers are limited to three minutes only. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Well, there's no one else, another, so anyone online that wanted to speak? See no hands raised at this point. So then we'll start with the action request for consideration for approval as the city administrator search update and discussion.
All right, as you are all well aware, you're without a permanent city administrator, and Ms. Joyce Parker is here. I'm allowed to walk us through the candidates that have submitted their applications and provide her insight and recommendation on how to proceed. So with that, I'll let Ms. Parker take it away.
Okay, thank you. So anything to members of the city council and members of the staff that are here as well as the public. This evening, what I'd like to do is talk about the qualification summary, which is attached to the packet that was sent out. In addition to that, I put together potential candidates to be considered as semifinalists for the position. So on the agenda, number one, related to the qualification summary. There's a kind of a spreadsheet that provides information regarding each of the candidates in terms of applications that we will see. We received seventeen applications for the position, and what I did was review each one of the resumes based on the requirements established by the city council. And then, once evaluating the resumes, the second step in the process was to actually interview those candidates that appeared to meet all or most of your requirements for the position to get better insight related to the candidate's attributes and those other areas that we discussed in our last meeting. So, for example, on the candidate qualification summary, for example, number one. The candidate has a bachelor's degree, which was required, but in addition to the bachelor's degree, if the candidate had other experience that might compensate for not having a degree, that was also considered as well, based on our discussion. Another requirement was related to a master's degree. Five years' experience as either a city manager, township manager, or city administrator, or serving as an assistant. So as part of the evaluation, that was one of the areas of consideration. In addition to that, senior department heads that work for municipalities was also considered as part of that review process. And then, other areas required related to community and economic development, human resources, labor relations, budget and finance, experience with grants, experience in the area of public works, and information technology. So each one of the candidates was evaluated based on that criteria. So with that, again, for example, candidate number one did meet the requirement related to the bachelor degree. The candidate had a bachelor of arts degree, but did not have any of the other requirements without, with the exception of HR and labor relations. The other information included on the spreadsheet is notes associated with various acronyms. So, for example, BA is a Bachelor of Arts degree, BS Bachelor of Science, MA Master of Arts, MS Master of Science, JD Juris Doctorate, WD is withdrew from consideration. I had two of the candidates withdraw from consideration before bringing this information to you. The IT is information technology, and PW Public Works. And then there's a couple of areas on the spreadsheet that is designated for BG, which is like background review. And in that instance, there were a couple of candidates that were not considered primarily because of information related to a preliminary background check or reference check. Any questions or comments related to the candidate qualification spreadsheet?
You actually answered one of my questions, the BG, I wasn't sure with that. I was like, well, they have all the qualifications except IT, so why aren't they on the list? So thank you for answering that question ahead of time.
You're welcome.
I don't know if you, what was com ed?
Oh, community and economic development.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, if there is no questions related to the qualification summary, closer to the back of the packet is a memorandum related to potential semifinalists for the city administrator position. And in this particular report, you know, I pretty much summarized the number of resumes, the seventeen. And there were seven candidates who were from outside of Michigan. And then I talk about the process again, basically evaluating the resumes, interviewing various candidates related to the requirements for the position, and then as part of that process, recommending a short list of candidates for consideration for interviews, and there's four on this list. And generally, as part of the process, I might have anywhere between six and eight or ten candidates that really meet the requirements, and then from there, pare the number down to about five. But with this particular search, because you had two candidates withdraw from the process, they were potentially good candidates, and that narrowed the scope even further. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Question, Ms. Parker, so can you speak to some, so the people who do have all of the qualifications, but they're not in the memorandum, so like they're just a note on IT? Was, was there a reason you didn't include them, can you speak to that?
They were not included primarily because of information that came back either through the preliminary background check, the reference check, or social media check that we do. And certainly, I should share with you that, you know, this is primarily my recommendation, however, if members of the council would like to interview other candidates, you're certainly, the decision is really yours.
Right.
Yeah, so you can certainly do that if you'd like to do that.
No, thank you.
And you mean by if we like see someone on here or we know someone outside?
On this list.
Okay.
Yes.
Also, so did you only, you did a phone interview, you didn't do a Zoom, correct? Or you did?
In some cases, I did a Zoom interview.
Okay.
I did a telephone interview.
Was there a reason some of the individuals?
How much information I was able to obtain before the interview related to the candidate? And the timing of the interview.
Okay. So, I guess I'm curious, so what information did you need for the Zoom besides like their, and this is, I'm asking for them, like what, what did you need besides their email, I guess, to do the Zoom?
What did I need in order to?
In order to complete a Zoom meeting with the interviewer or interviewee.
Meaning, I'm not following your question.
Why were some of them interviewed by Zoom?
Yeah, you said you needed some, yeah, missing information.
Right, part of it was actually interviewing a candidate beforehand, and the interview was done by Zoom. And in one case, it was a while ago, it was actually done by Skype. So basically, I had previous knowledge related to the candidate.
Okay, thank you.
Because they were involved in another search.
In another search, yes.
So there's one that's on who was involved in another search.
Okay, you can keep going.
Okay, so candidate number three, I was just gonna go through the summary. Have related to the candidates, okay. Candidate number three has a Bachelor of Science degree in economics from Western Michigan University, a Master of Science degree in public administration from Central Michigan University, and a Master of Business Administration degree in organizational leadership from the University of Michigan, Flint and Ann Arbor. As far as employment history, the candidate was recently employed in a township in Michigan with a population of twenty-four hundred as a township manager for eighteen months. And then, just based on my interview process with the candidate, I was, I asked questions about the short tenure in the position, and was told that the candidate had some concerns regarding ethics and the community and the governing body, and as a result, decided not to continue. Okay, and then prior to this position, the candidate was employed in the private sector for three years as a legal specialist, a project manager for a housing agency in Michigan for two years, worked in two school districts and in public sector organizations for seven years, and a transportation agency for a city in Michigan for five years. And then, in the packet of information provided, the candidate did provide information related to experience and information technology. So, and I should just reference, if that information was not included in their packet, more than likely, they got the no. And if the information was included, or it was, it was part of our discussion, then I would show that as a yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then in terms of comments, again, the candidate has fifteen years' experience in public positions. Some of the strengths, the candidate has a strong network, has a background and experience in financial management, and is considered a consensus builder as a background in transportation management. And the candidate is interested in Lathridge Village because of its historical community, and it's an attractive community to live and work. And then, the candidate indicated a good working relationship with trustees in the community where the candidate worked. The candidate worked well with the staff and supported the staff in terms of professional development, and also worked to improve staff and worked as part of the team. Last salary for the position was eighty-five thousand dollars. The candidate also received a car allowance and a cellphone stipend. Can, any questions?
Someone says experience in financial management, is this specific to doing a budget?
Yes.
For a municipality?
Yes, actually, having responsibility for putting together a budget for a municipality at the department head level.
Okay.
Okay.
So how did you determine if they were actually experienced in IT?
Yeah, based on the information that they shared. So, you know, certainly, I did not consider just experience like as a department head, as an IT person, as a department head, but having some experience with the office suites, Word, all of those other applications related to office. In this particular candidate's case, the candidate has experience with the AS400, which is kind of a major piece of hardware in the public sector. So that was a consideration. If they had experience like with website design or maintenance of a website, you know, that was another area of reference.
Thank you.
Candidate numbers seven has a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice from Concordia University, a Master of Science degree in public policy, leadership, and management from Humphrey School, and a Master's degree in public administration from Barak College. The candidate also has a certificate of human resources management from the University of Minnesota. In terms of work experience, the candidate is currently self-employed as a CEO of a private sector company for two years. The candidate provides services for court proceedings in Nevada and California. And prior to the current position, the candidate worked in another private sector firm for five years in government management and project consulting in North Carolina. The candidate also worked in county government as a department director and research and policy for three years, and a management and budget administrator for one year in Virginia. In terms of interview comments, again, the candidate provides stenographer services on a consulting basis. The candidate is interested in the position because the community is stable and positioned for growth. Strengths, skills, and abilities include being very organized, able to multitask. The candidate is considered a servant leader, is an advocate for professional development, and offers opportunities for staff to participate in areas to allow for growth. And the candidate also is able to implement policy and meet expectations related to projects. In terms of population, in the county and city where the candidate was previously employed, population was four hundred thousand at the county level and one hundred thousand at the city level. Last salary in local government was eighty-five thousand dollars.
So this one, this candidate does not, does not live in Michigan.
That's correct. The candidate lives in Minnesota.
So they're willing to.
Relocate.
So what about their, so they're currently self-employed as the CEO, would they? Talk to them any about that, as if, so does that continue on?
Well, yeah, I did ask questions about like the relocation into the city, and the candidate indicated relocation would occur, and thought it was important to live in the city. Based on the discussion, I was not of the impression that they'll continue to do that. I think because of the background, working at the county level, it was a skill that the candidate relied upon in order to do the consulting, but it was not something that, that I'm thinking would continue if they were in this position.
It's five years working in government, not per se as a city manager.
That's correct.
Okay. So the, this person was a budget administrator for one year, is there any more budget experience, you know, outside of the one year?
The candidate's experience for the one year was as part of working for a city as part of a urban fellow program.
Okay.
But also have experience as a director of a department with budgets.
Okay. But this person never prepared a actual budget for the city, for a city?
For a new department.
Just for the department, not for the.
Department, not for the entire, excuse me, not for the entire city.
Okay.
Okay, candidate number eight has a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science from Hope College, and a Master of Arts degree in urban and regional planning from the University of Florida. The candidate is currently employed as an Assistant Director of Community Services and Economic Development in Michigan for seven years, and was previously employed as a senior planner, public works program coordinator, and intern in various positions in Florida for the same organizations for five years. In terms of interview comments, the candidate has worked in local government for a total of twelve years in cities with a population of one hundred and twenty-five thousand and twenty-two thousand. The candidate is interested in the position because it is a viable step with professional goals established by the candidate, and it closely matches the candidate's skill set. The candidate grew up in the Lansing-Detroit corridor and is familiar with the community. And then in terms of strengths, skills, and abilities, includes being visible and establishing a relationship with the community. The candidate has a strength in community engagement, is change oriented, and is not afraid of change and doing things outside of the box. The candidate has experience working in large and smaller communities, and is very involved with the city council and staff at the planning commission level. The candidate attends all city council meetings, has an excellent relationship with the council and staff, and in terms of salary, is at eighty-seven thousand dollars.
So this person also lives outside of Michigan right now?
Doesn't say they work at Michigan?
No, that doesn't.
Yeah, currently in Michigan for seven years.
Yeah, this candidate is in Michigan.
They did have various positions in Florida.
Yeah.
Is that what you probably saw?
Probably so. Right here, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Can you speak on the remarks about the budget, as you guys talking about, but I'm sure, since you checked it off?
Just one second. In the candidate's position as an Assistant Director, the candidate had experience, has experience working with the department head with the development of the budget. But this candidate has not served as a senior director, he's in an assistant position.
So he assisted with preparation of a budget.
That's correct.
Do you have any more information on what a citizen academy might be?
When discussing the academy with the candidate, it appeared to me that it was a program that was offered to various residents in the community as well as members of boards and commissions. And the candidate was involved with the development, the initial development of the academy, and has participated in each one of the academies for the past five years.
Maybe they'll be able to go and get during the interview process.
Yes.
Because it did sound pretty interesting to me, so.
Yeah, the candidate was pretty committed to the program and very excited about it, and very proud of the work that has been done.
Sounds like including residents, sounds like a good thing.
And the candidate mentioned with the academies, the size range from, I think he's seventeen to twenty-five participants for each one.
So what was his experience, did you, did you talk about any about the public works at all?
The candidate mentioned as part of the interview, just in terms of the budget responsible in the candidate's area, it said three point one million. And then, there was also a capital improvement plan in place, and it has been in place for like six years, and that's part of their process. A capital improvement plan in place and it has been in place for like six years and that's part of their process.
So he was managing that.
That, that part of the budget and that, that capital improvement program. And then just as another reference on your question about public works. When the candidate worked in Florida. The candidate had several positions within the same organization and one of those positions was with the public works department. Okay, candidate number eleven. Has a bachelor of science degree in sociology from Grand Valley State University. And a master of public administration degree from Central Michigan University. The candidate is currently employed as a village administrator and clerk. In a community in Michigan with a population of one thousand two hundred. And the candidate has been there for four years. Previously, the candidate was employed in a community in Michigan with a population. Of four thousand five hundred as assistant to the city administrator, economic development director for three years. The candidate was also employed in previous positions as a project manager. And in the communications profession for more than ten years. The candidate is interested in the city administrator position. Because of an opportunity for professional growth and it would allow the candidate to work in a larger community. The candidate is familiar with the village and believes it is an excellent opportunity. Some of the candidate's strengths, skills and abilities include knowledge regarding the city. Has excellent communication skills, is able to participate and embrace change. And gets along well with others. And the candidate indicated a good working relationship with the council and the staff. In the candidate's current position. Current salary is ninety thousand dollars with an anticipated increase in July.
I found this one interesting because we can. We can cut, we can do two administrator and clerk in one person. Is that really what she's doing in her present job? She's doing both administrator and clerk?
Doing both.
Oh.
Yes. And that's, you know, that's not unusual for small communities where you might wear more than one hat.
Yes, they've explained that to me. Yeah, that does work. Now, in a community our size, would that be something to consider? Or are we considered too big to do something like that?
Well, I think. It might require evaluating the duties and responsibilities and the complexity of doing both. Certainly. Yeah, the charter would be another consideration.
Any questions?
So did. You didn't ask what they were seeking in summer?
No, I did not.
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The one that would be out of town, does the city provide moving expenses?
For an out of town candidate, generally as part of your negotiation. If you select an out of town candidate or even one within Michigan, but there's relocation. Necessary, generally that's part of your negotiation process.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's. Move to the review dates or what's the next steps?
The next step, so. The next step is to decide if you would like to interview. The four candidates or if you'd like to look at including other candidates as part of the process. Once you determine that who you want to interview, I can reach out to the candidates. And work with the city to schedule the interviews. Once the candidates accept the interview, their information then will be forwarded on to the city. As well as a reference report that's in more detail related to. Their information that they've provided. So. Some of the things I would need from the city council is to look at dates, times. The process for the interviews, who you would like to interview as well. And I think another consideration is whether you want to have any type of. Community meet and greet or some type of a reception as part of the process.
Or that's during the interview or would that be after we cut it down to like two or no?
Well, I, I think it really depends on how you would like to proceed because it is your process. So, you know, one way you could do it is to have a reception where. The community can come in and meet all of the candidates at the same time. Or you could narrow it down to maybe your finalist. And then have the community come in just to meet that person, but I think it depends on what you're comfortable with as far as the process.
And what we've normally have done is we have the. Meet and greet for all of them. And then we go into the interview.
Question for you, so candidate ten, is there, is. There a possibility that we could get like the summary of them because they have the. The same track record as. I'm just curious. Yeah, I'm just curious to see what they were about since they have pretty much all of the qualifications. Just to see if they're missing out on a gym.
As long as it doesn't have a BG by it, right?
Yeah, unfortunately.
There were more, there were more, more to it than BG, right?
Oh, yeah, in, in this particular candidate's case. And it wasn't referenced on my report, but there was some issues. Related to the candidate's background. As far as working as a, like a city manager, the candidate was fairly strong, but. Something occurred, I'm not quite sure of all of the details. However, because of that, I was reluctant to add them to the list. I can certainly do that if, you know, if you'd like to extend an invitation, the candidate does have. City management experience. But there was something with the city where. Personal information, their belongings wasn't transmitted to them right away. It had something to do with the contract. And as a result, there, there was some pending litigation.
From the city to the candidate?
Yes.
And I had an asterisk by ten as well and fourteen. Yeah, and I put one by fourteen. I see a lot of yeses, only two noes, but just curious.
With candidate number fourteen, the candidate did not meet the. Five-year threshold. That, that, that was required as far as experience level and local government.
Did they come close?
No. Let me see here. It's about maybe thirteen months. As. A town administrator.
Is that current or that was a past?
Excuse me?
The currently thirteen months as a town administrator, are they still a town administrator or is that a past job?
A past position.
Thank you.
And on the resume, the candidate had indicated. They're currently in some sabbatical. Yeah, so there wasn't a lot of local government experience.
Okay.
Not to meet that five years.
So for candidate fourteen, is there a way possibly, maybe you could like. Hold back their information for us, like in case we wanted to possibly consider them for like. Something else.
I think you'd be very careful with someone that only has thirteen months as administrator because then we're still going to be depending on. Pam for putting the budget preparation together and from our charter, if I'm not mistaken, is the city manager's position. To do the budget, not Pam's and we already, we went through someone who was just getting their feet wet as.
I'm not considering, considering them as the city manager, I'm saying like. Can we like keep their resume to see if they offer something else to the city?
You mean for the city?
If there's another position.
There is something else possibly.
Well, we, you know, we could certainly reach out to the candidate if you had another. Position where you might have an interest and find out if the candidate is interested and then get back with you. We could do that.
Okay, but you can't, you can't share the resume with us.
No, not at this.
Okay, well, never mind then because I don't want you.
Yeah.
Get their hopes up.
But yeah, you know, that was the concern and then the other concern was the short tenure. In those communities where the candidate worked in local government, it was very short.
Okay.
But I think that the, getting the dates together for the next one would be the. Meeting greet, what? Not meeting greet, extending them to come in.
For the interviews?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so what I would, I could do is. We could look at scheduling maybe the meet and greet. Either the evening before the interviews and then have the interviews the very next day. Or if there's enough time and it would be difficult, I think, to do them both in one day. Yeah, so maybe have the meeting greet in the evening prior to the interviews. So that the candidates can meet the community.
And so what we have to do is basically send out a doodle poll because we want to do that in the next couple of weeks, correct?
If you want, send out a poll or?
I mean, since we're, there's only three of us here, I don't feel comfortable in doing the dates, so just have. Doodle polls and out to figure out the date, so what's your timeline as in do you want this to be done in the next couple of weeks or?
Yes, okay, you know, what would really be helpful is to try and schedule. The meet and greet and the interviews maybe no more than maybe two, two weeks out from now if possible. And the concern is, is that candidates are interviewing in other areas and the scope. The number of candidates have decreased at this point because of withdrawals.
Mayor, if I may, that would put you at two weeks out. Would put you the week of May twenty-third through twenty-seventh. You all are meeting as a body on the twenty-third to begin your discussions on the. Ethics ordinance, however. You have no, there's no other meetings. That week either council or planning commission wise, so. Twenty-fourth, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth would be.
That particular week. I can't at all because we also, did you ever hear back from Oakland County exec about the coffee hour? On the twenty-sixth?
No, I have not received official confirmation.
Okay.
They did. They were waiting to get the check, so they are.
Oh, we are.
They are on the calendar to do that.
Okay.
So. I was just gonna say, what about a Saturday? Does that work for you? Sorry.
That's gonna be Memorial Weekend, won't it?
Oh, that's right. Well, maybe after the holiday then.
Were you available for the ethics ordinance?
Yeah, I have that.
Yeah, why don't we just?
Was a bit more pressing.
I think that that would have to be something we ought to discuss, so. I know that Mayor Pro Tim has been pushing that, pushing that, and so I would. Prefer to kind of ask, send it out to him and ask him, send it out to everyone if they're okay with moving the ethics. I'm indifferent.
I'll, I'll mark it as a.
Possible.
Possible.
Yep.
Well, do the ethics that Saturday.
So then going into the next week, which will be the month, that would seem like that would be a little bit hard too because that'll be the week. Well, whatever, I just thought about it. That's the Memorial Day, that Monday, I don't, I was thinking about people on vacations, but.
Including the candidates.
So.
It always turns thirty-first.
Yeah, I was looking at that. So the thirty-first, the. Yeah. Consideration, I say consideration, then say, because we're gonna still send these out.
Yes, it is. The day after Memorial Weekend?
Is the thirty-first.
Is the Tuesday after though.
Oh. And then also even maybe June first.
Okay.
So that, that would mean we need to start interviews June second. You, you want to do it the, the right?
Like this the next day, because if you have somebody that's coming from out of town, especially, you don't want them to have to come back twice. So, yeah, it would be like the thirty-first and the first or the first and the second, which I can't do.
So are we giving up on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth then? Is a possibility?
I can't do on twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Well, about that would be two days.
Right, so.
So we gave up the ethics, switch the ethics, you still need another day.
Right.
And you said no for that, any portion of the room except the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, those days.
I must be well.
So you can't do the second of June?
Yes, I can move something around.
I can do any of them.
Okay.
In case I don't respond to your doodle.
Okay.
So you know.
Thanks, Mark.
June first and June second. June seventh to eighth. Now the next week is wide open. That's based off of me though.
Well, that Monday, we have a study session.
Yes.
We'll want to need a break from you. Okay, we do maybe your Wednesday and Thursday?
Eighth and ninth.
Yes. Well, you can put that on the doodle poll.
So we're talking a month away to start interviews?
I know what it is, what it is.
That's kind of.
Well, yes. Well, what, you know, once we know what the date is, I can get with the candidates. But again, you know, you, you, you may run that risk and that's just the way it is, unfortunately.
What about next week? Is next week too early?
Probably. If, if you're going to do a reception because you'll have to send out invitations and give your residents an opportunity to get it on their schedule. So you probably do need at least a couple of weeks.
Well, hopefully we can do June first and June second. I think that sounds the most reasonable.
I just thought about it. That's the day on a whole.
Because that way the one candidate can book their plane ticket. And it won't be super expensive. Yeah, I think.
Which, which brings me to another question as far as travel expenses. If there are expenses, are you willing to pay for like airfare or mileage or hotel accommodation? If, if, for example, like a person out of state might have to stay overnight. Someone local may be able to drive and it would not be as expensive.
Could you give us an idea of how many are going to need travel expenses?
What I've noticed with most of the searches, if they're in Michigan, in most cases, they do not bill you for travel. But if they're coming from like Minnesota, they may want to be reimbursed for their travel expenses and the hotel accommodation.
Pam?
We've done it before, if I'm not mistaken.
The last time we did this, we had two people.
Okay.
In hotels.
Sounds like that will be a yes.
I don't know about that. I don't know if we did the airfare because they drove, right?
One person, but we did that by, um, it wasn't Zoom, it was something like.
It was, um.
Skype?
Yes, yep.
Be potentially a lot, like what are the locations besides Minnesota?
The other locations are here in Michigan. Yeah, you only have one person from out of state. And you know, part of what I'll do to really finalize this list is do the more detailed reference review. And if there's anything that comes up that we're not aware of, we will be in contact with the city before we actually get everything ready for the, you know, for the interview process. That's part of the review process to check references.
So we'll send the, um, those two dates out. Um, and then you're going to give us sample questions for the interview.
Yes, I'll, I'll send sample questions for your review. And what I would ask is that the city council review the questions, make whatever changes, adjustments you'd like to make, and then we can get them finalized for the interview.
Okay. Now, during the meeting greet, is there some kind of structure to it usually? Or is it just a free fall?
Like the last reception in Lathric Village, and I thought it went really well, by the way. I think the mayor made some opening comments and then each one of the candidates were introduced and they were allowed a time, I think it was like five minutes to talk about themselves and their interest in the position so that the community would have a sense of what it is that is attractive for them related to the, to Lathric Village. And then after everyone did their presentation, it was really one where they mangled with the community. Now, you know, if you want something more structured, we could certainly take a look at that. If you want to see some, some type of different outcome as part of the process, but that was the way it was done the last time.
Actually, last two times.
Any other questions?
Nope. Barb, thank you so much.
Oh, you're quite welcome. I have a question actually about your reception. I'm presuming this is in the evening. What times would you like to look at and for how long?
I was, I wrote down, this is just for me to block it for myself. I have, but like six to eight.
Would it be in the community room?
Yes.
And are you talking Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yeah, one day unless, yeah.
The interviews are here, but the greet, meet and greet is downstairs.
Correct. And that's what I was going to say. We got to make sure the room isn't booked.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure I have that minor detail.
I think that, I mean, I personally think that's a decent time. Anything else for us?
Uh, no, I think we covered everything on my agenda.
Okay.
Thank you for taking the time to meet with me.
Thank you, Joyce. You're very, very welcome.
Um, we will open it up again for public comment. And public is limited to three, three limits. That's what it says on here, but three minutes.
Clearly, I was having some, uh.
But this one says minutes on this. I don't know this. And then I think we have a couple of, uh, I can also read a couple of public comments that we received.
For whatever reason, Zoom didn't want to participate today on our public comment computers. Let me go check the other.
Is there anyone, I don't see anyone that's raised their hand right now. No one?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak? Um, and so for public comment, we received something on Thursday, they said from Glunford Stevens. And it was, the city trees on the sidewalk has damaged the concrete. As a resident, I cannot cut those trees. I don't think it is fair for me to pay for the construction of the cement slabs because there's nothing I can do with the roots of those trees. The city should be responsible for that. And we submitted their address.
Did you have the one about the dirt road?
I don't see you on. Oh, here's another, May third. From Danielle Wise Hurt. We have very deep potholes on our side street, which is sunset. The holes are reoccurring and getting worse each year. The leveling trucks moves out the road. But due to rain and traffic, the potholes are back the next day. This is creating a nuisance and wear and tear on our vehicles. In fact, we are asking for the dirt roads to be paved. May second. I think I did this one. I did this one because we were in a meeting about the clear cut.
Oh, no, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so we did that one already. I think that is all that we have there. And then, um, I'm assuming everybody got one of these. Okay, so this is to the Lather Village City Council. At the last city council meeting, there was discussion about cleaning up a few islands in the city. While I believe all should be cleared of thick invasive brush, I have connections to the Somerset, Blackstone, Willshire island. My family lives very near the island and every time we arrive or leave the neighborhood and every time we look out our windows, we are forced to see this eyesore. We agree with our neighbor Andrea who wrote the letter last week. We do not wish to see it completely cleared out. However, we wish to see it significantly cleaned up with new grass added. There is also potential for beautiful non-invasive plants and trees to be added to the privacy our neighbors love. This island is not only an eyesore, but also foreseeable hazard for drivers as it is very difficult to see around the thick bush. Additionally, there are not enough yield or stop signs around the island to prevent these dangers. And I do not want a car accident to end up in my front yard while we are outside playing with our children. The thick tangled brush will only continue to grow as I have identified at least three highly invasive plant species. Staghorn, Somac, Red Mangrove, and Weeping for Santhia. While Weeping for Santhias is not technically invasive, it will take root wherever a branch touches the ground. Eventually, the island will be completely overgrown with these plants and others I have yet to identify. Council mentioned that the residents in this area generally keep up this island and keep it clean. We are happy to do so. However, the plants are so intensely overgrown and tangled that it's impossible to retrieve the endless amount of trash that is building up within. Also, within this thick web of tiny branches are many species of merman. While we love to see bunnies, the island also attracts stunks and rats, both of which we have seen recently. Rats can make their way into our homes. Thick coverage like this also attracts coyotes, which seem to be a growing problem in Lathrow. There are beautiful, healthy trees and other non-invasive plants on the island that we wish to keep. Request the city get rid of the dead trees and invasive plant species and turn the island into a grassy park like townswoman Kenez mentioned last week with the potential to add extra plants for a bit of privacy. We wish to see it turned into something very similar to Dorothy Warren Park on Morningside and Bramble Drive, which has beautiful trees, plants, and picnic tables to enjoy time there. We wish to see our island become an area that our neighbors can meet and spend time getting to know one another and truly enjoy Lathric Village community that we came here for. Thank you for your time and we hope you take our request into consideration, residents of Somerset, Blackstone, and Willshire. Any other comments? Do you know of? Mayor and council comments?
I have none for the evening.
I just had a, just two questions. Oh, and one was the triangle. So that well, that will be discussed when we have a, at our next council meeting. Are we going to discuss what we're doing with these triangles and things? Will that be on the agenda or?
I believe we said we're going to look into the maintenance efforts of that. I don't know if we'll be ready for the next council meeting.
Okay.
I'll have to go back and look at my other notes because this is not the last meeting note. So.
And have any of these had a cut yet? Do we know? Has anybody been out to cut any of them? So the.
I'm not. I haven't, I, I haven't asked anyone to cut this yet. I know DPW was out last week cutting the Cut City Hall, so.
They are starting to cut that.
They are starting to cut. So I don't know if they've made it to these areas or not.
And then just to follow up on the Joan Price generator, did we ever find out if her neighbor had the generator got approval for it or what happened with that one?
Still need to go down into the basement and get it. All of our CBA records are in the basement. So we'll get back on, on track with looking through those, those files then.
And one last comment. I did finally see our basement and it's horrible. And it's dirty. Do we have anybody taking care of it? What goes on down there? It's filthy.
Nothing's been going on down there for the duration of COVID. So I, it does need some TLC.
It does. Have we considered bringing in like a huge crew in just to do a big overhaul and I, I. Can we talk about that? It's a mess. And it's.
I, I don't disagree. I, I, I think we need to really sit down as a staff and figure out what needs to, what can go. We do, we are you know, governed by record retention laws. So we have to see what can be thrown away or just rather destroyed. I, I think that's probably step one before we consider hiring someone else. I know the, the police would like to see that reconfigured anyways to suit their needs. And I think that that, personally, I think that's a far better use of the space than cleaning it out for I don't know, more programming. You know what I'm saying? So we have some.
Soul searching, if you will. But in the meantime, it could be cleaned. I, I could see a cleaning company coming in there and look, it's dirty. It's awful.
Come in.
Thank you.
No comments.
All right, well, then I would take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, oh, sorry.
Thank you.